Okay, so it's seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. Um, I think we have a couple or at least one change to the agenda. We definitely need an executive session for the employment or evaluation of a public official. Is, am I missing something else, Dave? Was there another? Adrian was gonna insert something.
Also, uh, for the purpose of discussing negotiations would be another executive session clause.
There any other changes to the agenda, amendments that I'm forgetting? Okay. Is everyone good with the amended agenda? You can give me good. Um, and then Maria brought up a very good point. And I would just like to quickly, before we get on to our minutes or anything else, for the public, just to explain that visually, when we're virtual, it's very difficult, or I shouldn't say visually, but it's very difficult when we vote on anything, unless we do a roll call for anyone to know, especially me as chair or the chair of any of the committees, who's voting affirmatively. So that's why we do a thumbs up, or you can raise your hand, or you can give some affirmative gesture so that I know that that's the way you're voting. Um, so I don't want, I just want to explain that to people so people don't think that when we give a thumbs up, it's in any way, um, means anything more than just, I'm voting yes. Um, just so that that's clear to everyone out there that's watching and may be wondering.
Tammy, can I also share something before we proceed? That'd be okay? Uh, we've had a couple members of the public that have tried to access the link for the meeting this evening. We do not have anyone signed up for public comment that followed the, the protocols for signing up for public comment. So I just want to remind our members of the public that, um, on the same agenda that had the link that the board members are participating on is the YouTube link where you can view the live stream of this meeting. So once again, same agenda, YouTube link, live stream of this meeting. There are a couple folks that, um, sought entry this way, but we, we prefer that the public, if they're not commenting, uh, consume the YouTube link. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding everybody of that. Okay. So can I have a move on to number three then? Can I have approval of the minutes from January 20th? Thank you, John. And George, thank you for seconding. Are there any changes to those minutes? Any amendments? Hearing none? All those in favor of approving the, um, minutes from January 20th? Please, um, give me a, a hand up or a thumbs up. Okay. Excellent. Anyone opposed? Please say no. And anyone abstaining? Okay. And we'll move on to public input and announcements. And we don't have anyone that's signed up for public comment, right, Dave?
That is correct, Amy.
Okay. And are there any announcements from anyone on the board? Okay. So we'll move into principal updates. And, um, since Maureen was the first one on and, and we were chatting, so I'm gonna let Maureen go first.
Okay, so I'm awake now, so. Um, so updates for Timothy. Um, we've been focusing the last few weeks on completing the STAR 360 for our mid-year, and we test all the kids. And so far, it's good news. Our, our scores have gone up substantially, 20%. And I attribute that to, um, to the after-school club and to the hard work the interventionists are doing. And especially to the teachers who have really put forth a lot of effort. And, um, I'm really proud of them and really appreciative of the hard work that they're doing. Other than that, everything has been very quiet. Um, we've been safe, we've been healthy, and our attendance is, uh, doing well. Um, and aside from that, everything is, is proceeding smoothly without a problem. So that's about all I have tonight.
Great. Thank you, Maureen. Hi, Cody. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, good.
So, you know, similar stuff to what Maureen said happening up at Shrewsbury, we tested all of our kiddos as well on the STAR 360. Really proud of, um, the teachers and the students for some great scores. Um, you know, this year, obviously, we can't do the winter sports program, so we've been having fun coming up with other things that we can do. For example, um, the second graders made some amazing ice sun catchers. We've been just spending extra time outside, um, exploring. We had big kids today go roll all over the pre-k playground to try to tamp down the snow enough that the pre-kers could use it again, and that was really fun. Um, so just having a good time, um, getting ready to head into February break. We are going to exchange Valentines this year by bringing them in on a Monday and having them sit until a Friday. So we're feeling happy. We found a way to do that. And, um, thanks to an amazing community member, we're going to have a pizza party the Friday before break, and kids are very excited about that.
Fantastic. What was an ice snow, uh, sun catcher? How does one do that?
The kiddos found some beautiful pieces of nature, um, that they could still see, um, despite the snow, and put them inside of pans with water with, um, with a rope. And so once it froze, they were able to hang them from the trees, and they're just gorgeous.
Very nice. Very nice. Thank you. So I'll move down. The next person on my screen that I see, that's a principal, is Fred. Hi, Fred.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you. Thanks for having us. Appreciate it. Um, I wanna say thank you to our community members because we had a school-wide fundraiser. And this is a different kind of fundraiser. It's, uh, it's through School Store. And, uh, basically, people can purchase things from other stores, uh, on websites and whatnot, and, uh, we get credit. But also, the community can donate directly to the classrooms, um, gift cards. And that, uh, school-wide fundraiser generated over $2,700 in gift cards for the classrooms and the teachers. So, you know, for them to use in the classroom is phenomenal. Uh, kindergarten got the biggest chunk of that, but it was pretty much spread out throughout the school. So I wanna thank the community for participating in that. Uh, really pretty low-key, which is nice. Um, we've been meeting in clusters. We're doing testing as well, using that data to determine what interventions are going on. Our, uh, scores are raising as well, and I give credit that teachers are working really hard. Our interventionists are motoring all morning long, and we've got a tutoring program after school that's working really well. So we're, we're continuing to try to identify where the needs are for the school or for the kids. And, uh, we're putting together what our, you know, continuous improvement plan is going forward. And part of that is we're assessing our assessments. We're evaluating the assessments to see what's working at different levels, what's best, uh, you know, whether it's a teacher, um, generated, some of them at the smaller, or we're using STAR 360 or F and P, those kinds of things. And, uh, we're also taking a look at our software programs that we're under utilizing. Well, we're being a little cautious there because having an hour less in the day really causes us to focus on core things and take away a little bit from the project-based learning that we do so much of. Uh, so some of those programs aren't being utilized, but we're taking a look at those and see what we wanna continue with. And lastly, our leadership, uh, team is getting together and kinda putting together what our plan is so that we can share out with the whole school, you know, what the different clusters are doing for, uh, continuous improvement. Um, so, you know, so we all get a chance to share and see what's going on and helping out.
Excellent.
Be happy to answer it.
Any questions for Fred? Great.
I forgot, uh, we're, our clip book year giveaway, uh, we're having another round of book giveaways before break. And then we're gonna have a reading challenge for the kids, uh, over the break with their brand-new books. So, uh, I, I neglected to say that. That's pretty cool.
That is neat. Thank you. Thanks for sharing. Hi, Dan. How are things down in Wallenford?
Things are going well. Uh, you know, I could almost say ditto on some of those. We're all, uh, wrapping up the season of assessment for STAR 360. And, you know, what, what is an assessment if you're not doing something with it? And so, um, our teams have been fast at work identifying possible clusters for small groups. Um, but we also are getting our tutoring program up and running. And, um, there have been a lot of hurdles that we've had to go through at every site, uh, across the nation and the world with COVID. Um, and with our schedules being adjusted and starting remotely, I would say that, um, our staff has been phenomenal at taking advantage of the opportunities that have arisen. So I know when we started the year remotely, we had this golden opportunity for teachers to have more individualized conferences with families and students to, uh, find out what their needs are and how we can best support them during this challenging time, um, that is, uh, not over yet. And so with the shortening of the school day, that brings its own challenges instructionally, when there's already so much to try and get our kids to, um, learn for the, the learning expectations. But it's provided another opportunity where we have that two to three o'clock hour to get some individualized support to some of those students that we're identifying through the STAR and F and P results. Um, our after-school program's been doing a great job with, um, a, a lot of help, a lot of homework support, and some individualized support. Uh, but we feel like this is another opportunity to give those kids that extra support they need that's specific to the areas we identify in the STAR 360. So our team's focused on, uh, creating lists, and they're reaching out to parents this next week. We're hoping to get that up and running. Uh, by the time we come back from break, the lofty goal was this coming Monday, but that's fast approaching. Um, but the other, the other part of that twofold is that they're also looking through their data in their, uh, learning pods to identify what they need to do whole class and what they need to do in pulling kids aside for small group instruction. Again, those clusters that, um, students are kind of around the same learning level. Um, and, and you know, small groups this year are small. It, it looks different. I know staff has been hesitant to pull students aside and, um, support students in small group because in our mind, we picture the kidney table with kids and arms reach and kids, you know, shoulder to shoulder, maybe three to five. Um, but now it's like, three is pretty much the max because you're almost spread across the room with social distancing at that point. Um, but they're doing a good job being creative and, uh, and maintaining that social distance and being safe at the same time to support our kids where they need it. Um, we, we don't wanna ignore the snow that we've, we've finally gotten. I know I came from California and I was expecting snow to start on, uh, Halloween and not go away. Um, so it seems like we've had a delayed start, but that doesn't mean that it's gonna end early. Uh, so I'm bracing myself. But, but the kids have been enjoying that. Last year, there were a bunch of sleds that were purchased. And unfortunately, they came at a time when everybody went home for the remainder of the year. So we've been able to pull all those out, set some expectations for the sledding hill, and, uh, and the kids have been having a blast on it. So, um, you know, enjoying the snow, the weather that, that we're provided, and just having a good time. Any questions?
Any questions for Dan? Thank you. Hi, Tyler. How are you?
Good. How are you? How's everyone doing tonight? Good. Uh, so I've got a two-part board report. First, uh, just a little what's going on at the building. And then also, I wanna answer to Len's question at the end of the last board meeting about, you know, some attendance figures and, um, grade reports and what have you. So, uh, what's going on in the building right now? Uh, we're in the second week of our second semester, and we are also, uh, in our second week of our new schedule, which I, uh, would like to say is, uh, going extremely well. Uh, I was, uh, I've been covering some classes here and there for teachers who have been out and what have you, or some scheduling conflicts. And, you know, the kids have all said to me, you know, this is great. We can see our teachers twice a week. And the shorter classes, they feel like they can actually do more in the shorter classes, which is interesting, but, uh, it's what they're used to. So I, I really think that's what we're getting back to, and I think that's going really well for them. And I've also heard the same from teachers, you know, they're, uh, they're back to what they used to. They're back in the, in the rhythm of things. So, uh, uh, that's going really well for us. And, uh, our kids adapted really quickly. So that, that was, uh, uh, really well. There's a little bit of a, um, uh, traffic jam the first couple mornings, uh, because we started five minutes earlier and some of our parents, um, you know, um, waited to the last minute. So that was, that was a little trying on me. I was got a little, uh, little, little nervous about the traffic jam on Mill Road, but we got through it and we're fine now. So. Uh, I wanna get to, uh, Len's question about the, um, uh, grade reports and attendance figures from, uh, the last board meeting. And I apologize, I'm gonna throw, uh, a fair amount of data at you, some numbers. So if, uh, you have a question, just interrupt me. And I've got some notes that I'm gonna be reading off of and looking at. So, uh, if I don't see you raise your hand, please just interject and, uh, ask a question and what have you. So, uh, I wanna take you back, uh, way back to last June. Uh, I know it was a long time ago and, uh, the weather wasn't quite as cold. But, uh, what we decided at the, uh, spring semester of last year was that, uh, we were gonna allow students to choose and families to choose a pass/fail system for, uh, their grades because we didn't want anything that was thrown at them last March to June to negatively impact their transcript and what have you. And, uh, from that, uh, anyone who had a grade lesson or two, which is the minimum passing score or, uh, grade, uh, we put an incomplete there. And what we did is we gave students, uh, a deadline on November 1st to remediate those classes, work with their teachers, work with our self-help, uh, teachers to remediate those classes. And I'm really happy to say that about 75% of our kids remediated those classes. And, you know, it either was through a project or a couple different assignments that enabled them to reclaim credit for those classes they had in the spring. Um, and we took a hard look at what the grades were before we chose what that remediation was gonna look like because we didn't wanna make sure kids were not harmed in any way by COVID or what have you, uh, and when it was, everything was thrown at us last March. So, uh, that's been really positive. So, uh, fast forward through what we're looking at for this year. Uh, attendance-wise, attendance has been interesting because, um, it's different. And because we have students attending some days in person and students attending, uh, remotely, we have to put those together for our average daily membership, our ADM. And, um, we have one block of the day that we do that, and that's our advisory block. Now, so when students have to check into advisory by 9:30 every morning, and that's, they check in online through Google Classroom. Now, that is our daily attendance, whether you're remote or you're in person. And then students attend classes, whether they're remote or in person. Uh, so that's where the tricky part is. You know, some of our kids will forget to check into their, uh, their Google Classroom, their advisory in the morning, but then attend every single class. And then vice versa, some kids check into advisory and then blow off every single class. Um, so it's been very tricky to track attendance, uh, this year because we've had to double and triple-check, you know, individual classes to then account for the ADM and then vice versa. So it's been, it's been tricky. And, uh, something that, uh, I know predates me, uh, at Mill River, but I know some of you might, uh, have heard this, uh, committee before, the attendance committee. Uh, I've reinstated that. I know, sorry, Len, I see you dropping down there. Uh, so, uh, yeah, we brought back the attendance committee, and, uh, we wanna make sure that we're being very proactive with attendance and truancy and what have you so that we know, uh, what, where our students are, what they're doing, and we can be proactive with then scheduling remediation based off their attendance, based on how they're attending in, in school. And mind you, the attendance committee just met last week as, as, as a group. It is, uh, a couple guidance counselors, our general ed support teacher, myself, and Ms. McAmore. And that's gonna, that's a really gonna pay dividends for us. So we're really proactive with that attendance piece. John, I saw you raise your hand. Um, you catch me in a good role. Go for it.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, make a comment. Something I've heard from my kids is that the teacher that's doing the TA doesn't always put up the, uh, check-in in a timely manner, I guess. So they look for it, can't find it, it's not there, and then forget to go back to it, could look again after they've started their classes. That's just a little feedback.
No, that, that's, that's good feedback. And that's where, uh, you know, with Mary Bride and what have you in our attendance, uh, um, system is we go back and then take a look and see, are, is the student attending each individual class? And then we can change their ADM based off that Google, um, Classroom check-in in the morning for advisory. So again, there's, there's a lot to it. And, you know, it's, uh, I did a little bit of a litmus test, and I'll talk about the grading aspect in a little bit, but I did a litmus test with some of the area principals, uh, in the beginning part of the year, then also just recently. And, uh, all the things that we, uh, are experiencing in Mill River with attendance and with grade reports, uh, is pretty much being seen across the board at the other high schools, area high schools as well, county high schools. Um, you know, attendance is, it, it's, it's proven very difficult in this time of being in an electronic age of, uh, not having every kid in the building at, uh, and not having the ability to have Mary Bride, uh, hound our families and track kids down who are remote and what have you. So I mean, that has proven to be difficult, and we're working on that. And like I said, through the attendance committee, we're trying to be as proactive as possible with scheduling those kids. And then also, you know, uh, we've been very proactive with our truancy, uh, policies and protocols this year with, uh, Deputy Hoffman. Uh, I've, I don't know how many, uh, days a week I send Deputy Hoffman out to houses to, uh, check in on kids and make sure we're good to go. And, uh, those, uh, we always usually see a bump in attendance after that happens. So that's, uh, uh, very good as well. Uh, I'm sorry, I have, uh, a lot more to talk about, and I, I'm sorry to go along here. But, um, you know, one thing we are seeing though is with our students, it's interesting. Again, this is kind of that litmus test for across the board of all area, uh, high schools. We're seeing a fair amount of, uh, for lack of better words, apathy with our students. Uh, you know, that social emotional toll of not being in school with, with all their friends and their peers every day. You know, we're seeing a fair amount of kids who are just, uh, kinda thrown in and not completing the work that they need to do. And that's where, again, our tense committee is falling in place. Our counselors are checking with kids on a daily basis. And we're really trying to be proactive and, and make sure those kids are getting what they need. And also, then also to Len's question with how are grades doing? Um, so what we do is we grade on individual performance indicators, and those are like the, the substandard of the standard, if you will, that each, you know, assignment is tagged to. Now, um, again, this is where the data piece comes in. If I lose you, please just raise your hand or, uh, interrupt me. So each year-long class assesses six to eight performance indicators and one to three transferable skills. A semester-long class, which are a lot fewer than we have year-long classes, assess three to four performance indicators in the same one to three, uh, transferable skills. So if you, uh, take the general average of that, let's say it's seven performance indicators and two transferable skills. So per class, we're assessing nine performance indicators per student. Uh, I did some quick math, and essentially what that looks like is in seventh grade, there is about 4,600 individual grade reports. In eighth grade, about 4,000. Ninth grade, about 5,500 individual grade reports. And about 47 for the 11th grade and about 4,300, 4,400 for the 12th grade. Uh, what were, I ran a, a failures list just recently, and that included transferable skills and grade reports. And about across the board, right now, uh, in each individual grade, we're about 3%. So there are 3% of those individual grade reports are a failing grade. Uh, and what we're doing with that is we are being very proactive with our scheduling. Like I said, we're only in the second week of our second semester. What we've done is identified those kids, identified what classes they need help in, and then put them in with self-helps. And, well, if there's a, a hole in their schedule or identify time where they can meet with their teachers outside of, uh, of school to, again, get them back up to pace. And if need be, maybe take them out of that class and remediate with a project or some way, uh, something to get them back on, online. Um, so that's been very, uh, advantageous for us. We've been extremely proactive, making sure that our kids are keeping up with their work and checking on those, uh, those grade reports. Now, one thing I wanted to say with the 3% there, those are individual grade reports. So there might be, it's, it's hard to say 3% of the student body because there might be other students or individual students with, you know, 10 failing grade reports, and there might be some students with none. So, you know, that 3% there is just 3% of the overall, not per, you know, um, individual student. So I know I threw a lot at you there, and, uh, I could probably dive a lot more into a lot more data. But, um, that's kind of where we are right now. Uh, I, I will say that we are, uh, looking forward to the, the budget vote coming up because we have, uh, in this, in the proposed budget, a new counselor position uh, coming to the high school, and we're looking to, uh, revamp our guidance, um, procedures for next year. Looking at, uh, instead of, right now, we have a counselor for seven through nine, and we have a counselor for 10, 11, 12. We're looking at, uh, blowing that apart and doing alphabetically so that our counselors are, have their hands in every single grade level. And then also having a dedicated career and college readiness, um, position with the new counselor so that that is 90% of their main job, and then looking at, you know, the allotment of students for, um, you know, each individual grade level. So that's something I'm really looking forward to, and I think they'll pay a lot for our kids to help them down the line. So with that, any questions? Len, go ahead.
Actually, I don't have any questions, and I, and I wanna thank you, Tyler, for, for putting all this together because I know it's a lot of work. And, and I, again, I wanna give you kudos for changing the schedule. Um, that, that was, uh, I think, not that what was going on before was bad, but it, I, I think it takes some courage to, to make a change like that, and I think it was a positive change. So I wanted to thank you for that. I, I think, I, I think that deserves recognition. The, the other thing, you know, the 75% remediation, I think that's, that's very positive. And I know this is a whole different thing, you know? So I, I, again, I, I wanna do nothing but congratulate you and your team in doing the things that you're doing because to me, it's amazing. Uh, and I, sorry about the attendance committee head-down thing. No, no, no. I, I don't oppose the attendance committee. As long as they're doing what they're doing and taking care of kids and making sure the kids are okay. My experience with the attendance committee wasn't necessarily positive, but that was a long time ago, and times have changed. So that's why I just kinda went, oh, man. But, but the way you explained it was, was, I appreciate it. I really do.
Yeah, to that point, you know, that, that, that committee predates me, although when I, you know, I brought that up, you know, I, I got that reaction from a lot of people. Um, we wanna make sure that it's not, this, this, uh, committee is not punitive in any way, shape, or form. This committee is, committee is put together to help kids who identify kids who are at risk and then puts, uh, supports in place to make sure they're, they are successful.
And, and that's the way it should be. And so I, again, I, I've got nothing to say, but thank you very much. Number one, I know this is a lot of information that you had to dig up and, and go through, but I appreciate how hard, um, you folks are working, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, George, you had a question. Go for it.
Hi, um, great report, number one. Uh, number two, uh, the, your attendance committee is, is functions as you're describing, I think will be a, a good addition. Um, the thing that I was curious about is in the notes that you're sharing with us, did you make any kind of a graph or a spreadsheet or anything?
I, I really didn't. I apologize. I mean, I can do that if you like. Um, I really was just jotting down some, uh, quick notes and did some quick math on some, you know, those figures. But if you like, I could.
Well, I don't wanna give you any extra work, but I, I always like looking at the numbers in a picture format of some kind, but that's up to you.
No, I can do that, and I'll get that to you shortly.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Adrian, you have a question?
Um, yeah, I, I was impressed with your report too. Lots of information. Um, the 3% of the indicators that you said were not successful, do you have any way of, of, um, correlating that with individual students, or are you depending on teachers to, to flag them for your, for interventions?
Uh, both. Uh, so, you know, individual teachers for sure, uh, but I really lean on, uh, Jen McAmore uh, and Stacy Fisk, our general ed support coordinator, EST 504 coordinator, uh, to really flag these kids and then figure out where they are, what their schedules look like, so we put, uh, supports in place either through self-help or through a teacher individually. Uh, so I mean, we are actively with, uh, looking at those. And, um, let me just, uh, see, I, I'm sorry, I deleted the tab. But essentially, you know, uh, you know, the 3% there, I think the highest grade report per grade was in, oh, I don't remember, but it was about 170 individual reports, you know? And again, every, and that's individual reports, not individual students. Um, so, um, we are actively going through that list and making sure and seeing where kids are. You know, and again, also, we are only in the, uh, you know, second semester. Some of those year-long classes are still gonna show growth as they move on throughout the rest of the year. So, you know, that was a lot of communication between Ms. McAmore and Stacy Fisk and myself and these teachers saying, you know, do we need to put something in place here, or is this just, do we need to, you know, see where this goes? And, you know, it's kind of hit or miss depending on how the student works and what have you. So it's pretty individualized. But, uh, um, no, I, I would say it's, to get back to your question, it's both. It's the individual teacher and our support team.
Um, one, one other question. You were saying that, that you've identified, um, apathy amongst our student body. Are we doing groups for kids to, to get together with, or what are we doing to address that? I mean, I think that's sort of a scary, a scary word.
It is. You know, I, I, um, our senior class had a meeting today and, uh, virtually. And, uh, I was in it for a little bit. Yeah, yeah, sorry. They weren't all in the auditorium. Um, it was a virtual meeting. And, you know, it's really, it's, it's difficult to have conversation with them because nothing is the same. Nothing is what they're used to. And their senior year is drastically different than what they expected it would be, you know, um, pre-March last year.
And highly disappointing.
What's that?
I said, and highly disappointing.
Yeah, they are. They are. You know, and they were asking questions, hey, can we fundraise, do it, you know, can we do a car wash? Can we do a raffle of some sort? You know, and, uh, unfortunately, the answer to them right now is no. Can we do a raffle of some sort, you know, and, uh, unfortunately the answer to them right now is no. Uh, you know, it's, and then that's what's unfortunate because, you know, putting students together in, in a group outside, even, even outside mass is difficult and I don't want to put our students and our families and our community in that situation. So, um, yes, to answer your question, we are talking with kids more individual basis and we are, um, working with kids through our counseling and what have you. But you know, I'm gonna be extremely honest with you, my conversations with other area principals, uh, when we talk about that, it's a little bit of the unknown because it's not, you know, we normally would see a lot of, not a lot, but we'd see apathy in some of our, you know, um, uh, more needy learners, some of our kids are having, struggling, struggling learners, if you will, uh, but this is across the board. You know, this is even some of our high flyers are really starting to check out. You know, I'm gonna call her out by name, but I was talking with Kristen Semeney the other day and some of our kids who, you know, absolutely love being in course and love being there and you know, that's their, their big thing are starting to shy away a little bit. And I don't know if that's, you know, outside influences or family influences or what have you, but we are definitely making sure that when we see that, we are wrapping ourselves around those kiddos and making sure that they're taken care of. Um, I've never seen our guidance staff more busy, uh, on a day-to-day basis. Usually it's like two or three kids that each counselor has in their, in their pocket, they really need to work with. They're working with a huge caseload right now, you know, they really are. And it's, and it's not just where Cheryl's working with seven through nine and, and Dia's working 10, 11, 12. Um, they're across the board. The kids that they are close to, they're working with on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to hear.
Any other questions out there? Sorry, I took so much time. There was a lot there.
Okay. Don't see anybody else. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Appreciate it. So we'll move on to central office reports. So Dave, do you want to kick that off?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, good to see everyone. Um, this is our, probably our last regularly scheduled board meeting before town meeting day, as I think about it. Because our next meeting falls during the February break and I know that we'll, um, talk about scheduling as we move forward in this meeting. I wanted to start by thanking all the principals for their reports tonight, thanking Tyler for the extensive report. Wanted to build on a couple of things. First, George, when you were asking Tyler about the attendance committee, I was convinced that I heard the pun coming. I, I, I knew that you were going to tell Tyler that the committee would only be successful if everyone showed up at the right place at the right time, but I was disappointed. I didn't hear that. Um, but I, I'm here for you, buddy. Second, uh, you know, and Adrian's question about the apathy, you know, just an interesting personal anecdote. So many of you know, my, my youngest son is a member of that senior class that, that met today. And so what Tyler is, is talking about from their experience was a conversation in my home today. And I had a conversation with him a few weeks ago and he verbalized something to me. He said, you know, dad, I, I'm, he was asking me about the end of the year. Uh, it feels like he has an inside track, like dad might know a few things about what the end of the year might look like. And he verbalized to me that, you know, he had just grown accustomed to expecting to be disappointed. And that comment struck me, you know, uh, it, it first it, it hurt because it's like, man, you don't, you don't want a kid in high school to, to see the world through that lens. Then there was a part of me that's like, well, there may be something positive about that, you know, we all have to learn at some point in life that life is not fair, that things don't work out the way we want them to, that, that we can't have what we want. But many of us had the experience where that didn't happen, you know, until we were adults. Um, so trying to sort out with my son, trying to sort out how I felt about the reality. And, and you know, how do we best support kids? How do we best support adults in an unprecedented time? I hate to overuse that term, but that's our reality is we're all finding our way through this. So it's real. Uh, anybody on this, on this meeting that is a parent, I'm sure, um, has seen or experienced or felt some of those same, same comments or, or questions at home. And I just saw John McKenna's stand going up. John, did you have a comment you wanted to make at this point?
Yeah, I just, uh, little anecdote. I used to say that, uh, if you wanted to get used to disappointment at an early age, just become a Red Sox fan. And then they started winning. So that was right out the window.
Hey, I resemble that remark.
Dave, Dave, you will get this. My husband just interjected, no, you become a Bears fan.
I do get that. It hurts. Although I'm hoping it's a good year to be a White Sox fan. That, that's, that's what, uh, I'm rooting for personally. Um, hey, on my report, I, I, I want to talk about dollars and I want to talk about days essentially. And I want to thank Stan for letting me steal his thunder. He normally guards this information carefully and doesn't share with anyone and let anyone else talk about it, but he's allowing me to do so tonight. So as you know, from the report that, that we issued, um, the education fund has shown some favorable turns and the legislature is, is talking about adjusting the yield upwards for, for our viewing audience. When the yield goes up, taxes go down. So that relationship is important to us. We were building based on one yield amount and we're looking at a higher one. What we decided to do is still be conservative in projecting impact on our local taxes with the improved ed fund outlooks. Um, not use the, the number that the state's talking about, but use a number that's slightly less because we don't want to overestimate. But I'm really excited to share what seemed to be some positive numbers for our towns on taxes. Board members, you've seen this before, but our overall expenditures are up by point 17%. That number hasn't changed. That's because the, the board built a very responsible budget that paid attention to local taxpayer ability to pay. Our spending per pupil is down point 98%. That number is also unchanged. But some of the new impacts on our taxes, uh, due to the changing yield, we're projecting that our school district tax rate will be down 2.63%. We're projecting that tax rates in Clarendon should be down about point 91%. Tax rates in Shrewsbury up point 74%. Tax rates in Timoth down 2.74%. And tax rates in Wallingford up point 41%. So, um, as a district, as a board, um, I'm impressed with the work you did that lands at a place where none of the tax rates are projected to go up over more than 1% and, and even some are going down. And that's a, that's a really cool outcome. So well done. Good work by you. Also want to just share with, uh, the board and with the community, um, a little bit about our calendar that is developing for next school year. The, um, just so you understand the process on how our school year calendar gets developed. State statute requires that regional superintendents, uh, and in our case, around here, that's Rockland County Superintendent's that sends students to the Stafford Tech Center. We have to get together and plan the regional calendar together so that there are 175 alike days that we will all be in session so that students can go to Stafford uninterrupted. School districts like us that have 177 student days, you know, we, we add our days in where we need to in order to get to that total number. But as, as we landed on, um, an overall regional calendar for this year, these are some of the key dates. We're looking at a start date of September 1st. That is a Wednesday, looking at Thanksgiving break, traditional time, November 24th, beginning, December holiday break, uh, December 23rd through January 2nd. Looking at February break, February 14th through the 18th. April break, actually a week later than it is this current school year, April 18th through the 22nd. And a tentative last day of school on June 13th. That's assuming we don't have any weather issues that, that come up that would delay us. We all know how that works. One other key piece I want to just share with the board is in that regional calendar, for the first time since I've been working uh, at Mill River, this is year seven for me. So for the first time in seven years, the regional group of superintendents agreed to utilize the holiday that had historically been called Columbus Day. Um, we have not had that holiday on our calendars previously and we're actually going to be utilizing that to create a four-day weekend with parent teacher conferences on the Friday before, and then no school on the Monday. However, it is important to note that our calendar will refer to that according to what Vermont law requires now. That is no longer Columbus Day in Vermont. It is Indigenous Peoples' Day. So when the calendar is eventually issued, um, we will be noting Indigenous Peoples' Day. I think that's October 11th. Please don't, please don't quote me on that exact date. But I hope to have the calendar ready to roll and, and out for public consumption by the end of this month at the latest. Um, just so that you know, that the calendar that's developing has been vetted by our administrative team as well as union leadership already. Just to make sure that there are no glitches when it comes to the union agreements and number of days, et cetera, that we need to accommodate. So I'd be happy to pause and take any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Ryan, I know that you're with us by telephone. How are you?
I'm doing well. I hope everybody else is doing well this evening. Uh, one thing I do want to highlight in my report, if folks have not started hearing talk of recovery planning yet, uh, that's something you're probably going to hear a bunch about. Uh, the state is going to be asking us for recovery plans, but I want to, I want to make it very clear that this is not something that we're going to be planning and trying to roll out uh, at the end of the year over the summer next year. This is something that I think you heard from our principals today, they're doing. And this work is nothing different from the good work that, that they work on all the time. It's just more of it. We have more students that need more support. And looking at how they're doing currently in the classroom, looking at assessments and making quick decisions about what can we do to support them tomorrow based on how they did today, uh, is great work for them to be engaging in. So I, I just want to reinforce that, that recovery work is already starting. Our folks are really trying to do everything they can currently. And our educators are working in arguably one of the hardest times in education, at least in my career that I've seen, to pull this off already. So when you do start hearing about those plans, know that that work's already being done, if that makes sense. Um, otherwise I don't have a lot to, to add, uh, that's happened in the past two weeks, except uh, thank you again for approving that tech contract. The vendor, uh, canceled it the next day. Uh, so we scrambled, we found some more computers, uh, those already shipped. They weren't quite as many as we were going to get before, but we're already looking for the next vendor to try and find the next, uh, round. So nothing hugely new, but that's just kind of the world we're living in these days. Uh, questions?
Anyone have a question for Brian? George?
Hi, Brian. How you doing? Um,
I'm doing well.
The, uh, question I have is that on students that were having troubles with the online, uh, virtual stuff, how, how are we doing in that category? Is pretty much any student that wants to, uh, be, uh, virtual can do so?
We are, I, I'll, I'll tell you, I have had fewer and fewer things come up to me that we're struggling with. We have a lot of folks helping support at each school when, when folks are having issues and reaching out and, and trying to get connected. As, uh, you know, I have not heard a lot lately. We have so many more of our students back in school, you know, if you think about, uh, pre-K through six, going five days a week and there's only a handful that are still remote. Then the number of problems I think have dropped just because the number of students that we have remote are far fewer, if that makes sense, George. Uh, but like I said, I haven't had anything come up to me lately, uh, that's needed. Any, any problem solving? So I think our folks are doing a good job of still, still trying to help people out and get them, get them what they need to stay connected.
Excellent. Any other questions for Brian? I don't see any, Brian. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, everybody.
Hi, Andrew.
Hi, good, good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. Um, so I don't have a whole lot to report. As mentioned in the board report, my focus has really been on a lot of long-term planning and this kind of connects with what Brian was just saying about recovery plans. And that is really where my mind has been recently. And as Brian said, we're thinking about what we're going to be doing for recovery. It's really nothing new. It's everything that we have been doing and need to be doing around, you know, making sure we have a prioritized curriculum that we're building in time within the general education classroom to both provide remediation and enrichment opportunities for students. And just making sure that we're leveraging, um, form of assessment strategies so that we're collecting, you know, data on the learning targets that we're assessing students on, so that we can really target those interventions. And so a lot of this stuff is already in play. We're going to be re-engaging with some of the work that, um, we really need to focus on moving into next year so that we can make sure we're providing the supports that students actually need and identifying where their strengths and deficits are. And so at our leadership team meeting the other day, we started having conversations around kind of re-engaging with our work around a guaranteed and viable curriculum, which really, you know, uh, focuses on prioritizing the most high leverage, uh, skills and concepts. And then also starting to look at how we can move some of the work of Act 173 forward to make sure that we are building in that tier-two intervention, which also connects with, um, the Vermont multi-tiered systems of support. So a lot of these pe, policy pieces that have kind of been there for the last few years is just kind of going back to those and really just picking up where we left off before the whole COVID thing happened and really kind of trying to accelerate that work. Because that work is what we're going to need to focus on to support our students as we start to think about this idea of recovery. So that's, that's kind of where things are at right now. Again, um, not putting too much on the plates of teachers right now because they are, you know, um, overwhelmed and still kind of in survival mode. But starting to kind of put some things out there so they can see on the horizon where we'll be going and building on that as we move into next year. Adrian, I see your hand up.
Yeah, sort of. I realized I'd left it up and I saw it turned it off and thrown it back on again. Um, one quick question. How, um, well have we started communicating with parents of kids that are, that are sort of in, in the, the, um, in the mode of being identified and, and being worked with? And, and just to, to alleviate some of the concerns that are, you know, floating around if my child is never going to catch up.
Um, are you thinking more special ed or just?
No, I think our regular population.
Gotcha. Um, yeah, I don't have full data on that. I think principals could talk to that more. Um, and you know, as Tyler was saying, you know, I think it's, it varies across the board where students are at. Um, you know, some have fared well and others are probably going to be seeing larger deficits. And that's why we really need to have this intense focus at the, what's called the tier-one level. So the general education level where the classroom teachers are making sure that they're identifying these deficits, you know, early on. And so what that might look like is a heavier emphasis again on formative assessment or collecting um, in the classroom data. So that's in addition to anything we're doing with say, STAR 360 or any of these larger standardized assessments. Those are, you know, good in their own way, but this really in the moment kind of classroom level data where teachers can respond and, you know, make adjustments to their instruction kind of in the moment. Um, and then that can also be connected with, um, education support teams, so ESTs. And that's something else that a small group, um, that includes Coral, myself, Brian and Deborah Gardner-Bosh have been working on. So that we have this multi-tiered system of supports that starts in the classroom with a general education classroom teacher and it kind of builds out from there, ultimately kind of going up into certain levels of special education. And so a lot of that is going to fall on really the pedagogical practices that we have in the classroom. And that's the, will be kind of building, um, capacity with, with our teachers.
I, I guess my comment maybe was not, shouldn't have been directed to you. I guess I'm sort of directing it to the other thing. I've heard lots of really good stuff going on from multiple people and I'm, I'm hoping that some of that word is spread outside that we're not forgetting that yes, everybody recognizes kids have had a tough year this year and we have plans.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. All right. That's great. Thank you.
Um, and any other questions?
Thank you, Andrew. Hi Coral. Oh, wait, BJ has a question. Sorry.
Um, not directly toward Andrew, but while I have all the principals here. And I don't really want to answer now, but I'm kind of interested to see how the first remote snow, emergency remote day went. And maybe some kind of feedback on that one and maybe not for the, I mean, maybe for a further down the road type of a deal.
Jody wants to say something now. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a simple one. It went really smoothly. We are really lucky as a district that we got our remote systems very tight in early fall. And so as, uh, principals, we've just relied back on those systems anytime we've had to go remote. So, you know, coming back from December break, this remote day, we just revert back to that, that remote schedule. Everybody knows what's expected. Um, and you can check out the Shrewsbury Facebook page to see about what remote PE looked like yesterday, AKA still playing in the snow.
Uh, if I could add to that, uh, ours went really well. Ours is pretty easy. I mean, ours, you know, we normally have an every other day kind of, uh, system. So our kids were already, uh, our track A kids knew they were going to be remote and our track B kids had plenty of time to adjust to that. Uh, funny enough, do you know how many emails I got from students asking me when was lunch? I mean, I mean, I, I, I get a lot of emails in a day, but overwhelmingly yesterday I got tons of emails from students. When's lunch?
Pretty funny.
They prob, they probably wanted to know what was cooking.
My daughter just wanted to play in the snow. So.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, BJ, for bringing up that question. That was a good question. Um, Coral, now, how are you?
I'm well, but that kind of makes me laugh. You know, some days I'll be sitting in my office at like 9:15 wondering, when is lunch? So I'm glad to know that I'm in good company with our student body. They're all wondering the same thing. Um, uh, I, well, Tammy, thank you. Um, so I, I sort of focused my board report on one central topic um, that I just, I just feel is really important to make the board aware of. Um, and that is really involving um, our situation, if you will, regarding the reimbursement that we receive from state Medicaid funds for um, special services that we provide to children on IEPs. And um, you know, this year, um, since the beginning of the school year, September 8th, we've really seen a marked decline in the amount of Medicaid funding that we're receiving. So um, just to give you context on that, um, in general, for about this time of the year, we could expect to have received anywhere from $30,000 to $40,000 in Medicaid funding. Um, this year, we're at about $6,000. Um, so I say that not to alarm you, but just that, that I, that we have an obligation to make sort of the public aware that um, in terms of funding for special services, we are really seeing a decline in that this year. And I'm gonna put that back on Medicaid and say that has nothing to do with what we're doing or not doing for services for kids. It is about Medicaid rejecting claims that we're making based on things they don't understand or don't have information about, or technical errors that may be made. Um, for example, um, if we go into a period of remote learning for a week, and Medicaid is not aware of that circumstance, they will reject our claim and send it back and refuse to pay it. Um, so Medicaid is really about billing for levels of care that a student might receive based on the services they need to meet their needs. That's really what it's all about. Um, and it's very disappointing, I would say, as we're all talking about recovery that students need, and that we're all talking about interventions that students need. And then I have to report to you that the chief agency in the state that funds those types of provisions is bowing out. Um, so this is not a trend that's affecting Mill River specifically. This is happening all over the place. Um, it, there's a lot of bureaucracy involved, but I will say that the amount of time that it takes to remediate the things that Medicaid wants us to remediate is simply not possible um, to do. So we're working as quickly and as hard as we can to amend IEPs and work through that process and grab onto as much funding as we possibly can. But you can see that with that kind of drop-off in funding, that there's still gonna be a discrepancy there. So we'll see how the rest of the year shakes out. Um, it's only February, but very, very disappointing on this end of things. Um, it's possible that we will see our claims maybe pick up speed of approval. Um, I haven't seen that happen yet. Um, in fact, I see more of them get kicked back every single day. So that's concerning. Um, again, it's something that we're gonna continue to advocate on hard. Uh, my colleagues and I are, are really working hard on this at a regional level. Uh, there's a lot of folks at the state level that are advocating hard um, for improvements around the funding of school-based health services and IEP services. Um, but that's, that's kind of where we're at. So again, I would say the bulk of what I'm working on, my time is really invested in um, in the IEP amendment process. And, you know, just to, just for context, so, for example, the high school has just had another um, another schedule change, which is great. When that happens, though, every IEP at the high school has to be looked at and and basically changed. So that process is pretty massive on the special ed side of things. Um, so we're, we're coming into our third round of amendments. Um, we've done three rounds of about 115 amendments. Um, and so we'll be coming into another round of about 75 to 100 or so. So pretty intense work to have, you know, the, the payoff be so, so little in the end, which is unfortunate. Um, but that's, but that's where we're at with that on my side of things. So I'll take questions if you have them.
Questions for Coral? Coral, is this a byproduct of, is it COVID-related, pandemic-related, or is this something that's going on at Medicaid that's just a change in their policy overall?
Yeah, they've had, they've had pretty massive change, not in policy, but in protocol. So they've been rolling out new rules very frequently that just seem to come from thin air. Um, and so when that happens, it's very tough for school districts to keep up with what they're asking for today and what they're going to accept today. So if the bar always changes and, you know, we're just not able to keep pace with that. So, and it's also situations like, I laugh, you know, when I call customer service at Amazon, I get 10 different answers from 10 different people. So it's also a lot of that, um, a lot more of that than, than we're used to seeing. So it's also, you know, in a, in the COVID landscape, the face of the IEP has completely changed. We're writing IEPs to provide remote instruction for children we might not even be seeing. So the whole, the whole face of the IEP is completely different. So our special educators are adjusting to it. We're, we're all adjusting to it as a system. Um, and so, yeah, so it's been tough to, it's been tough to make all those expectations sort of align.
Thank you for the work that you and your team are doing to try and make that happen um, the way they want it to. Um, we appreciate it. Any other questions for Coral? Great. Gary, how are you?
Hello, everyone. Um, I'm actually very happy at the moment to, to report that not much has changed since the last time we spoke, which in my world is, is a wonderful thing in the winter. Um, yeah, it's, it's still cold, it's still snowing, but our people are still working and our systems are still working. So everything is really, at this point in time, going as well, I think, as can be expected for, for this time of year. Um, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Does anyone have any questions for Gary? More questions? So there you go. Good night, overall.
Thank you.
Hi, Carrie. How are you?
Hi, yeah, fine. Hi, everyone. Uh, so I wanted to just start with an observation, uh, which was from the principals' reports. To hear all of the elementary principals integrate their after-school programs and what they're doing into their regular report is, is just really rewarding. Uh, this is the 10th year of our programs, and I can honestly say in the first years, that just did not happen. After-school, summer was seen as discreet. We have before-school, then we have childcare. And to see that happening is extremely rewarding. Also, to hear Brian and Andrew talk about recovery work and be able to sit here and think, yeah, there's a lot of that that we're doing through after school with teachers, that it's very intentional and to be a part of it is just, uh, I think as a district, we, you know, we want to be really proud of that system that we've developed. So for my report, what I did is I provided you with a little bit of individualized data that reflects the priority populations of our students that we serve and the 21(c)(21) grant. Um, I know that you're aware that our programs are very inclusive. We don't leave any children out. But when I'm doing reporting, a lot of my reporting is very categorical. It's on the free reduced lunch group, as in low income. It's on students that are struggling academically. We have to, you know, keep track of, of test scores and assessments and look at how we're serving those kids. And also students that have special needs and social-emotional needs. So what I've done is just, I just provided you with a few case studies that the site directors uh, shared with me to show not only the progress that a number of individual students who struggle a lot during the day are able to make through a really individualized, intentional program that we do after-school, but also um, how we're being, we're very intentional with the actual planning that we're doing for individualized students and working with the teachers and with the principals. And so I just thought that might be interesting to, rather than talking about general data, give you some, here's some real kids. These are real. And, and you know, it's interesting, I had a total, this is, this is all from Shrewsbury and Tinmouth, and I had a total of like nine cases, and every one of them was, is a male student, which just was, is interesting, because half of our kids are female, half male. But, but sometimes it really has been the young men that just really stand out uh, within that population as, as far as needing, needing some extra support and this other, other space that we really provide through after-school. Just another quick observation on that, we have some of these kids, four hours a day, four hours to four and a half. Some that are doing the before-school program in Wallingford are then doing three and a half hours. So we're not talking that they're, you know, that they're playing a little and doing a little homework, four to four and a half hours. So that really gives us the time to be able to concentrate again on primarily social-emotional needs, but also their academic needs. Uh, two other quick things I want to add is, one is, we are actively planning summer now. We're just very optimistically and hopefully planning what we can plan, and then we'll certainly have to tweak as we go along with uh, with COVID mitigation guidance and all of that. But we're really hopeful for a really robust program this year. We have extra funding from Bows. And we also, second thing I want to mention, we also this week found out that uh, we have permission to actually roll over 15% of our budget in 21st Century Funds that might be left. And we've actually, other than I think my first two years, we have actually given money back every year, federal money. And some of that is because the childcare subsidy money has been so generous, and it's hard to predict. Every, it's really hard to predict year by year how much subsidy money that I get. So when I'm doing the budget, I start on the low. And then again, we have to use that first and then the grant. So last year, for instance, I think we actually returned about 60, Stan, could be $60,000 to $70,000 in 21(c)(21) money. And that was because the other funds that came in were, were much, were much larger than that. So, so this year, going into FY22, we're actually gonna be able to roll over um, a good, a good chunk of that funding that we, that we have left, which means the FY22 program, again, and along with Bows, is gonna be really well-funded. So I'm really happy for that. And that's, that'll be my last year, by the way. It's our last grant year, and it'll be my last year, full-time. So that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Carrie? Thank you. Other than the, the bombshell, um, Carrie, that was, that was, we'll miss you, I mean, after a number of years.
Well, it was going to be June, and then we got extended. So you could actually, you know, you have us and, and I'm, I'm absolutely committed to working on ways that, that, you know, I can continue to be able to help sustain those programs afterwards, because they're, they're really definitely, you know, very strong. So, thanks.
Thanks. Thank you. Hi, Stan. How are you?
I'm good. Um, I did not, I obviously, you know by now, I did not send you a formal uh, report with any numbers for, you know, through the month of January. Um, that is the case with uh, COVID adding more uh, duties to the business office. It was a pretty busy month in January, and, and just dealing with the regular year-end, year-end reporting, which was done on time by January 31st, but also, you know, dealing with uh, the COVID grants and making sure we were uh, in time and getting our money on those grants. Uh, I do have an update on the audit, which isn't uh, very much. Uh, it's going slow. Uh, they were kind of waiting on guidance to go fur- further with our single audit, which is an audit of our federal grants. Uh, they needed guidance since they are doing it remotely. Uh, usually with that type of audit, it has to be done in person. So they said they finally did receive uh, guidance from the feds in regards to doing that audit. So um, I hope to hear from them sometime next week in setting uh, that single audit up. Uh, usually we do have a report by now, I would assume, where we are in this stage of the game with the audit. We probably would not see anything earlier than probably April. Um, other than that, I, there, I don't have anything else unless somebody has any questions. So that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Hey, um, now we're going to um, have our, we have to have our executive session. That's for a personnel um, employment or evaluation of a public official and negotiations. So um, Dave, have you supplied us with um, a link for that just before we do the vote so everyone knows where they're going?
Yes, board members, I've shared a uh, an updated link. George, I've emailed you directly with an updated link for that. And um, for anyone in the viewing public, we will be holding this space. It'll be, it'll be empty for a while, but we will be returning back to this space after the executive session, if you wish to hang around.
Okay, so first, before everyone leaves, we need to have a, a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of employment or evaluation, George, of a public official. George will make the motion. Adrian will second it. Um, all those in favor, please give me a hands up, a thumbs up. Okay? Um, anyone opposed? Okay. Um, we will move into executive session. So again, the public can stay tuned to this channel. We'll be back. And everyone from the board, please jump over. And staff, thank you so much, principals and central office. I think it's the wrong one, John.
Thank you.
I had to change my layout. Yes, I believe so. And here's John.
There's John.
And we'll give it another couple seconds for Doug. And here's Doug. Okay.
Perfect.
We are out of executive session at 8:31 PM with no action taken. And we will move on to committee business. So first up would be personnel. And Glenn, I'll turn over to you.
Good evening. We have a couple of requests for board action. I would move that we approve a contract for Elizabeth Spencer. 1.0 full-time equivalency support staff. As a pre-K para educator at Wallingford Elementary School.
Is there a second? Thank you, George. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the contract for Miss Spencer. As rec, please give me a affirmative hands up. Thank you. And anyone opposed, please say no. And anyone abstaining. Okay, we'll welcome her to the Mill River community. And look forward to having us join us, having her join us.
She's a graduate.
She's a graduate.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, John, for pointing that out. I always like to make people aware that we we hire our own when we can, which is nice.
Secondly, approve a long-term substitute letter of employment for Kathy Manley. 1.0 full-time equivalency. Long-term sub-support staff. A general education para educator at Clarendon Elementary School.
Is there a second? Thank you, John. Any discussion? All those in favor of reviewing the contract for Kathy Manley as described, please give me a hands up. Anyone opposed, please say no. And any abstentions? Okay, welcome to Kathy. Happy to have her join us.
And just in terms of position openings. We're looking at a high school English Language Arts teacher. At this point, it's not sure what the whether it be a .6 or 1.0 full-time equivalency, that's to be determined. That's through the end of the year. And then an art teacher at the elementary level. And that's a 1.0 full-time equivalency. And looking at long-term substitute special education teachers. Moving forward, looking for a couple of those as well. And surprisingly enough, we're still looking for bus drivers. And then I would like to make one more. I move upon recommendation of the Mill River High School Administration to not renew the teaching contract of Jennifer Clough-Little for the 2021-2022 school year. And I would like to ask that that be done by rule call vote.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Thank you, George. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will go through the way you appear on my screen, which is not going to be alphabetical, just giving you a heads up. So Maria, you're first. How do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. George, you're next.
Yes.
Thank you. Len.
Yes.
Thank you. BJ.
Yes.
Thank you. Andy.
Yes.
Thank you. Adrian.
Yes.
Thank you. John.
Yes.
Doug, you're next.
Yes.
Thank you. And I would be final, and I'm a yes. So that would be a unanimous vote. Anyone obviously is not opposed, so. Do you need anything else from us, Len?
No, I I'm not going to set the date for the next Personnel Committee because it would be scheduled on March 3rd. At 6:00, but I think there's something going on that day. So so we'll hold off and we'll get it out when we need it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Len. So we'll move on to Policy Committee, BJ.
Woo. So we had a pretty good, we had a good meeting. We talked about a little bit more about the review process that we're going to go through for reviewing all of the policies that we have and staying on top of that. And we also talked about a, we looked at an early draft of another policy about registrations. And I suspect we'll see that policy come for a first reading at the next school board meeting. So that's going to probably be a note that we want to put on for agenda building. Uh. Last thing is our next meeting is because we want to get that other one in and we want people to vote. And we're going to actually have a meeting on the 25th at, from 6:00 to 6:30. So.
Excellent. Anything else? That's good.
Nothing that covers it.
Okay, just making sure. We'll move on to Adrian with negotiations.
Sorry, I had to unmute. I don't really have anything to report. Hopefully next time.
Okay. And then we will go to Buildings and Grounds. John.
Well, we tried to have a meeting last night, but unfortunately only Maria and I made it. And Gary, but he's not on the committee, so he didn't count in the quorum. So weren't able to do anything. The next meeting would be March 2nd, but we know there's some stuff going on that day. So we're not going to have a meeting that day. And after that, it will be up to Board Reorganization to figure out who's on the committee and all of that stuff. So we'll wait until then to figure out what the next meeting is going to be.
Great. Thank you, John. So Maria, Community Engagement.
Hi. So we had our first community conversation last week and it went really well. So thanks to the people who showed up for that and to the board members who helped with that. Um, I thought I would go over just the, some of the questions that came up in that session. Now, we'll also be posting them somehow online and I haven't figured out where that's going to go, but we'll let you know when we know where that's going to be available. Um, so some of the questions that came up last week were about the budget. Thank you, because that's, that we, we were hoping to be able to talk about that a little bit. And since Dave also already filled us in on the budget somewhat, I'm not going to go too much into that question. But there was a question about how the five different schools consolidate, how the five separate school budgets consolidated into one budget when the district consolidated. And, um, the short answer on that is the first year it was really easy. They took, the, the budgets were already prepared and they all got consolidated. And then since then, um, the services amongst the schools and staff have been consolidated. So each year, the needs of each of the schools is collated together and used by administrators to present a proposed budget to the Finance Committee, who then adjusts it as necessary to make it as fiscally responsible as possible, keeping the educational needs of students at the forefront. And then that's presented to the Board and the Board votes to approve the budget in January. And, um, thank you to Tammy for, for taking the notes of the questions and the answers. And I'm mostly reading from this. So there was a question about why is there a 6.65 increase in taxes due to the budget? And that was, we were really happy to say that's, that's not an accurate representation of, of taxes. And Dave went over that earlier, that, um, no tax, we don't foresee taxes being raised. Some taxes are going down and some are, and the ones that are being raised, nothing is being raised even over 1%. So let's see, um, what percentage of the budget is for staff costs? That's 80, about 80%, which is consistent with another community member who showed up who has experience in education. So let's see, there was a question about district students being denied admission to their home schools over, out of district students, so students from another town. Um, getting a space that the town student would not be able to get. And that also, um, isn't accurate. We, we you, students have an automatic space in their home school. Um, and then it's according to what is available at other schools. And please, anybody correct me if I'm wrong on any of this.
That, that was a little bit not quite right.
Okay, please correct me.
Yeah, no, it's in, in the, um, for K through six, that, that, or K through 12.
Right.
That's right.
And I'm getting
We're talking about preschool and preschool can fill up. And there are circumstances where if a three-year-old came in from an out-of-town school, we are although we are going to be talking about it, we do reserve their space in the four-year-old program. And in one particular circumstance that sort of put somebody from the town out, out of a place.
Right. And that, yeah, that's, that's where it gets complicated is with pre-K and we are going to be working on what our policy is for pre-K admission. But it's, that's, pre-K is also according to different rules and regulations than
Completely.
pre-K through everything else, K through 12, 12 even. Um, so that's, that there's a question about will the schools be hybrid in the fall? We cannot predict. We hope not. But that's something that we don't have the information for yet. Um, and that's pretty much all the, the biggest questions that came up. We are having two more this month, one this Saturday morning at 9:30 and one on the 22nd at 6:30 PM. And there are still spaces in both of them. In fact, we have looked into, um, how this, these sessions relate to open meeting law. And we were, started to be concerned that if we have a session that has a limited number of people, whether that actually, um, whether we can do that. And it turns out that it's it's, it's, we're still figuring out, but we, we're not going to limit the sessions. Anybody, we will post, um, the link to it and everybody is welcome to attend if you'd like to come. Um, well, if, if lots and lots of people come, we'll figure out how to maintain, uh, some kind of less formal structure than we would have a board meeting because that was the intention for these sessions was, was for it to be a little bit more relaxed. Um, we won't be recording them and we won't be streaming them. We will be taking note of the questions and, um, posting minutes afterwards. Is there anything else?
No.
About that, I think I should add.
No. Good job.
And, and, and please come. We've got people signed up for Saturday and for the following Monday, but, but you're welcome to come. Our Mill River community is people who live in our community. Um, people who work in our schools, whether or not you live in our community, people who have businesses here, we, we'd really like to hear from everybody if you have questions.
And Maria, just for uh, the people who are listening here. I know I'm going to be at the second and I am the Chair of the Policy Committee, so that might be a reason why you'd want to go on February 22nd. Uh, this one Saturday, who's the board member besides you? Or who's the board member that's going to be there?
That will be, um, it will be Adrian and Len and Liz will be there. And we're deliberately having at least one person from the Finance Committee at each of these ones ahead of the March vote. But, um, but yeah, it's good to know so that we can take advantage at, in, um, the, the 22nd will be you, Andy and myself.
Nice. Looking forward to it. And thank you.
All right. Thanks BJ. And our next meeting, like official meeting of the Community Engagement Committee will be on February 23rd at 6:30 PM.
Excellent.
Thank you, Maria.
Thanks.
And then we'll, oh, George, yes. Sorry. Sorry.
All right. I'd like to say good show to Maria. And I know this, uh, Community Engagement has been a long, hard road. And you've done well. Congratulations.
Thank you, George.
Yes.
Thank you for your support on that. I appreciate it.
Okay, so we will move on to Finance. And Andy, I understand you're going to be giving us the numbers again.
Yes, I have them right here. And let's see, from the General Fund. It's an order for $237,144.90. Also from the General Fund, $9,001.76. Food service, $1,095.13. After-school, $300.75. Total of these is $247,542.54. Moving over to payroll, date, the 29th of January, 2021. For a total of $455,383.06. So I move that the pay orders and payroll be approved as read.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? George, Doug?
Uh, I had a chance to briefly review the pay orders and payroll. Uh, nothing jumped out at me, but Doug, did you discover anything?
No, nothing I saw was, was a problem. The, uh, the one for the payroll is a little hard to see because I had to turn my head sideways. Going left and right instead of up and down. It was, it was cool. But yeah, no, everything seemed to be fine.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the pay orders and payroll as presented, please give me a hands up. Anyone opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else, Andy?
Next meeting of the Finance Committee is, uh, March, Monday, 29th.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's all.
Okay, we'll move on to transact other business. George, you already have your microphone on.
I do. I have a couple of items. You might be surprised. Number one, um, I was born in 1941, so if you do the math, that makes me in my 80th year. And what I'd like to say that I discovered today an advantage for being old. I got a vaccination for the COVID stuff. And for those of you that missed my earlier announcement, the person administering the vaccine was Amy. It was really kind of cool. Uh, so that is the first item. The next item I have has to do with the fact that I suspect that there will be a few new faces on the Board coming after the 4th of March. Or whatever it is. And I would like to extend my thanks and gratitude to those folks that, uh, won't be returning. And, and, and tell you that it's been an appre, uh, uh, honor working with you.
Thank you, George. Um, we have also to discuss our meeting on February 17th, which falls smack dab in the middle of Vacation Week. And traditionally, we don't hold that meeting in light of the fact that we have our annual meeting the following week. And what we traditionally have been doing is we usually do a short business meeting before the annual meeting, um, just to address any payroll, pay orders, any business that needs to be taken care of before the reorganization meeting in March. So, um, how do people feel about that? Adrian?
Oh, I, I was just put my flag up so that I, you'd remember to call me.
Oh, you're right.
But, but I, but I'm perfectly happy to, to not meet on the 17th. It seems a little redundant, as long as we can do business on the annual meeting night.
Okay, does that work for everybody? And you know, everyone probably has wonderful plans. And you know, everyone probably has wonderful plans to go away that week and go on vacation.
Bravo.
Yeah. So, but, um, you know, you could just, just cancel those plans. So we'll have a meeting if you'd like instead, but no, okay. So we'll move a, a short business meeting then on the 25th, say at 6:30 if that works. Because I think we're having a policy meeting at 6 o'clock that night, right? Okay. All right. Now I will turn it over to Adrian. She has something to share.
I, I just wanted to say I'm, I'm going to, um, put a letter that was written by, um, Laura Sores. For those of you that don't know, I'm on the Health, the Health Insurance Commission for, um, Educators' Health Insurance. And we're starting, um, to, to, uh, start collecting data and, and get together because we have to start negotiating for the second round, um, on April 1st or by April 1st. And Laura Sores is the former president of V-HI, so she's very well acquainted with, with, um, insurance costs. And she had a very informative letter that she was, um, giving to the Committee for General Housing and Military Affairs, which is looking at two different, somewhat competing bills on how to change Act 11 a little bit. Um, it's, uh, H63 and H81. Um, the employer side thinks H63 is a more reasonable thing, although there are some things in H81 that we're perfectly fine with too. But the main thrust of her letter was just the sheer number of dollars that goes into healthcare from this, you know, for this very large group of employees who, who are valued in the state and people want to give insurance, but, but the cost has been increasing so dramatically. Um, so I'm going to, I think she, she determined the expense for the calendar year '21 to be $227 million out of, out of the state coffers. And it's been going up, you know, 20, 30 million a year. Um, and when the new health insurance plan went in, it, just that changed to how, um, insurance was offered was over $25 million, just, just for the new health plan. So I will put that in the record and I'd love it if everybody read it. Um, there's all sorts of interesting testimony going on for those who are totally geeking out on politics right now. And most of us don't even want to hear the word. So read the letter. Um, it's, it's an interesting read. Thank, that's it.
And, um, no, our annual meeting, I may have misspoken, is on the 25th. It's Thursday, the 25th. It's always the last Thursday of the month in February. So thank you for bringing that to my attention. Um, so agenda building. So for that short business meeting, I'm sure we'll have some payroll and pay orders. And is there anything else that we, you know, Dave, that we would need to attend to specifically?
No, at this time, I'd say let's keep it simple. If something interesting comes up, I'll make sure that you're aware and we can schedule accordingly. But for now, just business.
And the first reading.
Do you want to do the first reading then, BJ? Yes?
That was going to be on the 20, on the same day as the, uh?
No, so will, will, do we do the first reading of a policy potentially on the March 3rd? Um, and then possibly approve that on March 17th?
Okay. Well, keep it simple.
Okay. So does anyone else have anything that needs to be added to that short meeting? We'll just keep it simple. Ann?
Uh, not to the short meeting. Did I miss something? Are you having a policy meeting before the business short meeting?
I, yes.
Correct.
A policy meeting at 6 o'clock, the, um, short business meeting at 6:30, and then the annual meeting will be at 7.
Quick question.
Yes, George.
On that abbreviated business meeting, are, are, are we going to have, uh, uh, other legal business?
Sure, we will.
Good.
What would be another legal business, George, ever? Okay, so then, uh, we, we had our executive session. We don't have need for another one that I'm aware of. So I think we can adjourn by consensus if that's good with everybody at 8:54. Okay, thank you so much, everybody. We'll have a nice night and.